Test, test.
We're sorry, you must first dial a one or zero when calling this number. Will you please hang up and try your call again?
Hi, you've reached the voicemail box of Russell Brazel. Please...
Test.
Hello?
Hey Russell, you got us? Can you hear me Russell?
Say it again? Yeah, now I can.
Okay. We got you, so I'm just gonna put you on mute and then um, soon as we'll unmute you as soon as the meeting starts.
Okay.
You got any echo?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I got you. You got any echo from our end?
Um, no. I did at first, but I don't right this minute, so...
Okay.
I think we're all good.
Okay. Sounds good. Just um, let me know if you do, we'll adjust.
Okay. Thank you sir.
Thank you.
It's a great day in Kershaw County. And we have a quorum. Mr. Brazel is calling in from distant land. Aloha, Mr. Brazel. It's a great day to... There he goes. Modern communications. It's a great day in an all-American county. We have a very detailed agenda that has a chock full of great business. So I suggest we get right down to the issues. Mr. Connel, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance? Would you all please stand?
Our dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for our many blessings and the opportunity to be here tonight. We pray for thy guidance and wisdom as we try to make decisions related to Kershaw County. Please help us be fair and objective, but also empathetic. We pray for those who struggle, who mourn, who need to be lifted up. Please lift them. We pray for those in our community who need assistance, help, and guidance. Please help them. And we pray that we can have the courage and strength to be examples and help others in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Let us do this to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Connel. We are now moved to our public comments. Mr. DeBeauz, Mary, do we have anybody signed up electronically? Mr. DeBeauz.
Mr. Chairman, no one signed up for public comment.
Okay, very good. We'll move to public hearings. We have a series of five very important public hearings. I'm going to take some time to read them through. But first, the first public hearing is on a public hearing regards to an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu tax and special source revenue credit agreement by and among Kershaw County and Sterlite Technologies and Western Score whereby Kershaw County will enter into a FLO agreements, an SSRC agreement with the companies allowing for the provision of certain special source revenue credits to the companies providing for the location of the company's property in a joint county industrial park and other matters related thereto. I'll open the public hearing. Has anyone signed up for public hearings?
Mr. Chairman, no one signed up.
Okay. And no one has stepped forward to speak. So we'll close the public hearing on Sterlite Technologies. The second item is a public hearing in regards to an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more incentive agreements by and between Kershaw County and a company known to the county as Project Goalpost, including any current or future affiliates or related entities sponsored to provide for FLO of added alarm tax incentives and certain special source revenue credits and other related matters. I'll open the hearing. Seeing no one's coming forward, I will close the hearing. Item number three is a public hearing in regards to an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement to provide for the transfer of certain real property from the county to an entity identified by the county as Project Goalpost and other related matters. I'll open the hearing. Seeing no one is coming forward to speak, I'll close the hearing. Item number four is a public hearing in regards to an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Kershaw County and Denkai America providing for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, and other matters related thereto. And I'm opening the hearing. I would ask Mr. Carpenter to introduce Jeff Burgess just very quickly for no comments, but just introduction.
Yes, for Mr. Chairman, members of council. Jeff, if you would not mind coming up and introducing my representative from Denkai.
Thank you, Vic, members of council. It's a pleasure tonight to introduce you to Michael Cole. He is the facility manager at Denkai America.
Delighted, Michael. Thank you for coming.
Welcome.
Welcome indeed. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Jeff. Since there's no one coming forward, we move to close the hearing. And we move to item number five, a public hearing in regards to an ordinance by Kershaw County to place and effect new service and user fees and rates and charges for the furnishing of fire protection services to vehicles registered within the fire protection district of Kershaw County as authorized by ordinance creating the fire protection district of Kershaw County. I open the hearing. And I see I welcome our fire personnel here. Good to see you, gentlemen. And also Lugo Fire, as always. Good to see you, Chris. Seeing no one came forward, we will close the public hearing and move to the next item, which is adoption of the agenda, which is on the screen. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
A second.
Second.
From Mr. Tucker. Mr. Carpenter, you wanted to make an amendment.
Yes, for Mr. Chairman, members of council. I would ask that item nine, a first reading in title only of an ordinance by Kershaw County Council authorizing an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Kershaw County and Project Seagull, be removed from the agenda. And I would also then ask that the executive session be moved to the end of the meeting.
Okay, very good. In regards to Project Seagull.
Yes, sir.
And for clarification, no votes would be required?
That is correct.
And just the gentleman here on this board and yourself and Mr. DeBeauz would be needed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the amendment of the agenda to delete item number nine on Seagull and move the executive session to the end of our meeting today?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. A second?
Second.
For Mr. Connel. All those in favor, so...
Whoa, 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 you did not ask if there's any discussion?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Why didn't you ask that?
Please go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Carpenter for making the move and taking this off the agenda. I saw it, and I didn't understand it because we have never put something on the agenda before that we had an executive session that came out and we're planning to vote on something. And I think we need the executive session because I've got a lot of questions to ask about why, one, this was, it looked like it was trying to be fast-tracked through. But anyway, I'll explain more about that later.
Thank you. Other comments? I think my comments to that assertion would be reserved to executive session. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor. First of all, we'll go to Mr. Brazel. How do you read, sir? Do you agree?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and all those present signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we'll move now to the agenda as amended. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Gardner, any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. First to Mr. Brazel. How do you vote, sir?
Yay.
Okay, and all those present signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and the agenda is amended and approved as amended. We move now to approval of minutes. It's at tab A. It's on the board. It's also at page four, I believe. Mr. Tucker, you were absent that meeting, so we move to approve it. All those, can I have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Gardner, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we'll be abstaining.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right, very good. With that, we move to a vote. First, Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
Yay.
And all those present signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous with Mr. Tucker abstaining, and the minutes approved. Thank you, Mary. We move now to a series of ordinances. The first one is a third reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu or Sterlite. Mr. Carpenter, can you introduce the topic, and then we'll put it into motion?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for third reading, and the execution delivery of a fee in lieu between Kershaw County and the company known as Sterlite Technologies Incorporated, where in Kershaw County will enter into a fee in lieu agreement with the company that has previously passed council on two readings.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Snodgrass, discussion. Mr. Tucker, Mr. Snodgrass.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Burgess and Mr. Carpenter and all who have been working so hard and diligent on bringing this more economic development. Mr. Beaus, you too have your legal mind, and keep it coming.
Very good. Other comments?
I'd just like to second what Vice Chairman Tucker said. Good job.
Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
Echo that again. Thank you so much to your staff. And once again, just shows that Kershaw County is open for business, and we're also leading place for global investment as well. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Brazel, any comments?
Good job. Thanks. We've got a lot of good things going on. Glad to see Jeff doing a great job for us. Thank you so much.
Yeah, just keep moving west, Russ, and bring back what you can, okay?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I would like to note that the agenda package has a Scrivener's error in it. On page three of the ordinance, it has the FLO payments, special source revenue credits, one to 15 years. It should be one to five years. It's one to five years. And the agreement, though, is correct. The actual fee in lieu of tax agreement has one to five years. But the ordinance itself has a Scrivener's error.
And if you're tracking along in your electronic book, it's on page 10. But that's been corrected, I think, on the screen, correct? If we can advance two pages? Okay, very good. But Mary has already corrected it on the document that I'll be signing on behalf of the county tonight, okay? Any further discussion? Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass.
Would it be in order, Mr. Carpenter, to have yourself or Mr. Burgess give a little bit more detail about this investment? So...
I'd be glad to have Mr. Burgess come up.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, Jeff, if you can come up.
Thank you again, Chairman, and members of council. Sterlite is an international company. It is actually located in India. It's headquartered there. They have offices in over 16 countries and seven global locations. The great part about this company locating here, it's going to be their first U.S. manufacturing operation. And they will be manufacturing optical cable. This is used in both residential, commercial, industrial, and has military applications. They've been involved with Truvista previously with, I believe, a grant that I believe the chairman and Mr. Connel have kindly worked on, on working with broadband, and they have to do some more work in this community in that area as well.
And it's a $23 million investment. How many jobs?
Yes, sir. It's a $23 million investment, 120 new jobs over a five-year period. The average wage is 23.14 an hour with an estimated average annual wage of $46,000 a year.
I think it's great, and I love that, you know, so this is the first manufacturing location for this company in America, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Which, that goes along with our trend. I mean, it's very typical for Kershaw County to be the first American operations for other global companies as well. So I love that we're continuing that and being the first of the market.
And looking forward to seeing them grow here.
Absolutely.
I think they have a lot of big plans.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Other comments? With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify. First of all, Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and all those signify by raising your hand. And Mary, record that as unanimous on the third reading. And Mary, record that as unanimous on the third reading. Item number two is a third reading, an ordinance authorizing execution and delivery of real property to an entity as Project Goalpost. Can you introduce that, Vic, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for third reading, an ordinance that authorizes the execution and sale of a piece of land currently owned by the county, located in the Governor's Hill Industrial Park, to the entity we are currently referring to as Project Goalpost.
Very good. It's at tab C and page 41 in your electronic books, Russell, while you're downrange. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second, for Mr. Gardner. Any comments, Mr. Tucker?
Once again, just want to thank Economic Development, Mr. Carpenter, and all staff members. Like I said earlier, keep it coming. This is things that we've been working hard towards, and we're finally getting a little bit of fruit of the labors. And I thank all of us up here for supporting them and continue to support them as they continue to bring on more jobs and better way of the citizens here of having a way of making a living. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gardner?
You know, thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Other comments? Mr. Jones?
A question. Mr. Carpenter, who are we talking about?
This is Project Goalpost. We still haven't identified it yet. In the next meeting, we anticipate third reading of the fee in lieu when the company will be revealed then.
Okay. We've always revealed in, pretty much, I think, in the, when we've had the third reading or when we've had a public hearing. Am I correct on that? Mr. Beaux?
Usually we do, as the other two, but it's not required, and these agreements are still being negotiated. But I might add that the purchase agreement, they do identify the name of the company, which is Goalpost LLC. So they formed an LLC. So it is identified. The name is the company, Goalpost LLC.
But we're okay to not worry about the identification of it tonight, even though that's normally what we've not done. But we will have identification of it by when?
When we do third reading of the fee in lieu. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Jones. This agreement has three or four components, and the final component we expect to bring before this board for reading next time we may meet, third reading, okay? And at that point, we'll have the reveal party, so to speak. Thank you, Jimmy. That's a good question. Other questions and comments? Any comments from Mr. Brazel?
No comments, sir.
Okay, very good. Let's move to a vote. Russell, how do you vote?
Yes.
And others signify by raising your hand. Agreement? And it's unanimous. We move now in your electronic book to packet number two. Mary has been very busy because there's such, so much stuff in this. Packet number two in your electronic book, we'll start on page one at tab D. It's a third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution of a fee in lieu agreement with Denkai America. Vic, can you introduce that, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for third reading, an ordinance that authorizes the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu agreement between Kershaw County and Denkai America. We have previously had the public hearing on this project. It has previously passed council on two previous votes.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second, then.
Yeah, Ben, thank you. And with that, can you ask Jeff to come forward and give us some of the particulars, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jeff? And thank you, Mr. Cole, for being here today. Great. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you again, Chairman, members of council. Denkai America is the only electro-deposited copper foil maker in North America right now. The facility that we're talking about was the former Oak McSue facility that was purchased by Denkai America just over a year ago, actually in March of 2020. Since then, that company, well, since Oak McSue has been here for close to 40 years now. So I think they've proven that they have longevity, and they are invested in this county. Based on that and the ability of Denkai America to pivot to meet new market demands in the EV industry, electric vehicles, they are going to use this operation to upgrade machinery that has been there for close to 30-plus years. This will provide them an opportunity to show their home office in Japan that they can do it here and do it well. We look forward to seeing this facility grow and look forward to seeing this expansion take place. They will be investing approximately $14 million. This will add 10 new jobs. The more important part of this is the facility currently employs right around 77 folks, and this will ensure that those 77 folks continue to be employed here in Kershaw County. The average wage of these positions will be roughly $32 an hour with an estimated average annual wage of over $60,000 a year.
Excellent. Questions for Jeff, please? Anybody? Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass, you had to lead.
Mr. Jeff, thank you so much for your work on this. Sir, thank you so much for being here, and we're excited about continuing this lasting relationship with this company. So you say their product feeds into the EV market. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. If you notice lately, there's been a major shortage of chips for automotive industry and especially the electric vehicle industry.
I love that. I think it shows diversity within our county, and we're posing their position themselves. They're going to be here a long time because, as we know, the EV market is only, it's only going to get larger.
Yes, sir.
The culture that we're in. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Burgess, where are you taking applications at?
Yeah, right.
Great question.
That's more than a preacher makes, I can say that.
They are actually taking applications at Denkai America. If you go to their home website, it'll be denkaiamerica/careers, and those jobs will be listed on that.
And I'm hoping some of the folks that's listening to this, on a serious note, will go and apply when they have the opportunity because that's a great job to have and a good, affordable living wage.
It is, and if you want to give your resume to Mr. Cole back here, he'll be glad to take it.
I got a resume and a resignation letter.
And you also have the media here listening to you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ben, go right ahead.
Jeff, I just want to make sure, do they make the actual chips or just component parts for the chips?
They make the copper foil for the.
The copper foil only, okay.
Yes, sir.
Because I know there's a bunch of local auto dealers who would be very interested in a local Kershaw County preference on getting their chips into vehicles so they could actually sell them in Kershaw County.
There we go.
I mean, nobody can get vehicles right now.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Very good. Other comments? Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass?
Do we know of the current employees, do we know the makeup of how many are current Kershaw County residents?
I might.
I mean, approximations, find out. Wow, okay.
90%.
90% of are living right here. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr.?
No, no. I yield.
Vic, go right here.
I was going to say, when council is done, if Mr. Cole would like to come up, if council was okay with him making great comments.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike, you want to come on up? You could?
Could I go first?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Because I have a couple of things I want to say. One, I'm not looking for a job. I keep my wife working full-time. And one thing I want to say, Jeff, when you first came to our county and first night I met you, I made the comment I was going to be watching. Well, I can't watch you because you're too busy. You're all over the place. You're doing a great job, and I'm certain that you will continue with the success you've had in the future, and I thank you very much. It means a lot to this county to get what we've gotten because it's been a long time. Thank you.
All right. Mike, please?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank everybody who's called. As Jeff said, we've been in the county for over 30 years.
Can you bring the mic over? We have about 400 people watching right now.
Sorry, so we've been in the county in continuous operation for 30 years. So next year will actually be our 30 years of continuous operation. We just had six employees hit their 30-year mark with us this week. So we're really proud of the organization we have and that we built over a long period of time, the longevity of our employees. And this really is a critical step in our future. As Jeff said, we're transitioning from printed circuit board applications where our copper is used more into the batteries that are powering these electric vehicles. And that's really expected to grow exponentially over the next few years, and this investment really is what we're seeing, is that initial seed that really start to what we think is a really bright future for us. So thank you all very much.
Other questions for our president here? Anybody? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Jeff, thank you. I'll just say, I'm going to have to buy another Nissan pickup truck, and hopefully it'll be an electrical vehicle. With that, we move to a vote, a hearty approval, hopefully. First of all, starting Mr. Brazel, please.
A hearty heck yes.
A hearty heck yes. All right, and others, please signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Michael, thanks. Send a strong signal to the higher office at INC that we are welcoming this in any way that you could wish. Thank you very much.
Amen.
All right, very good. We move to the next item, which is item number?
Four.
I mean, four. Second reading of an ordinance ratifying the execution of a contract to convey a parcel of land entered in between Kershaw County and what I call Cassett Water, but it's Kershaw and Lee County Regional Water Authority. Mr. Carpenter, can you open this discussion?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for second reading, an ordinance that would allow Kershaw County to sell a parcel of land to Kershaw and Lee County Water Authority, formerly known as Cassett Water, located in the Governor's Hill Industrial Park, so that they can build a water tower.
Yeah, the agreement is on the screen. It's at tab E. And for you, Jeff, Russell, it's on page 32. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
For Mr. Snodgrass, discussion. Mr. Tucker?
Well, of course, a lot of this industry is into my district. I think I have more industry sometime than people, but it's good to have it, and we've got a lot of space. So, Mr. Burgess, bring it on. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? This is obviously an enabler, and we voted on the first time. This now moved to a second vote. Mr. Brazel, please?
Yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Mary, we move to item number, let's see, five, I think I'm on. An ordinance to effect new service and user fees for rates and charges furnishing fire protection. It's on the screen. It's also in your tab F or page 37 electronically. Mr. Carpenter, can you open it?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have previously approved on two separate readings an ordinance to place into effect and create new service and user fees. This is required for the budget that has previously been approved with the creation of a $10 per vehicle, vehicle fee for fire services, only in the part of the county not served by Lugol Fire or the city of Camden.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
So make them.
Mr. Cornell, a second?
Second.
For Mr. Snodgrass, discussion. Ben, do you want to open it?
Yes, sir. This lines up with the other votes that we've already had on this particular topic, and also, as Mr. Carpenter mentioned, we've already approved the budget related to this particular fee. It's a fee which will allow us overall, per taxpayer, to have a lower cost per taxpayer for providing full-time fire service in Kershaw County, and it lines up with the goals we've had over the last four-plus years for reaching the phases in increments as we need to, to provide full-time fire service in Kershaw County. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Snodgrass?
Sure, just echo what Councilman Cornell said. This lines up with our, moving our fire plan forward as we move into professional career fire service, and that it lines up with the fact that the county service regularly responds to automobile incidents. So there's a nexus there. In fact, I heard of a story just recently. I think our county fire, I don't know the particulars, but I think even just in the recent days, they had to respond to a situation where there was an extrication. And just recently, I also heard a story about our fire service in another instance in which they had to extricate someone, and the doctor at the hospital said, "I don't know who cut you out of that car," but they saved your life. And that was done by members of our county fire staff. So just, again, it just recognizes the work they do. That's not just a structural fire, but it's a public safety on our roads and involved with automobiles. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments?
If I may.
Yeah, Jimmy?
Okay, now, the fire districts, I mean, the 24/7 will be in, what, Cassett?
Yes.
West, yeah, Cassett.
Blaney and Cassett.
Blaney and Cassett. That'd be 24-hour fire service. Well, what about Liberty Hills, Charlotte Thompson?
They'll be covered by the 24/7, but they'll also be part-time men. Those stations will still remain open.
My question is, are we going to pursue opening other stations in those areas?
Immediately, not 24/7. We already have stations there that'll have daytime hours, so they'll have volunteers or they'll have.
Has it been discussed about doing it at the next year's budget?
Doing what? I'm sorry.
Having more 24/7.
No, sir. We're still working on the fire plan the council's already approved.
Well, listen, I think I've done a great job, and of course, I don't support the, you guys know I don't support the fee process, but I do have a problem. We talk, we have a 24-hour county fire program, which, we're talking, we have two stations 24/7, and I just don't know if you, I'm going to look at it because I want to get together with one of the guys back here and get a 10-mile, maybe even a 5-mile radius as the crow flies, just to see where they could, where they are going to be responding, because when we talk about 24/7 for the entire county, I just don't think that's, to me, quite accurate.
Well, Mr. Jones, this completes just the initial plan.
Right.
This will allow us to finish it, then that opens the door for future stages of the plan, which I think at some point in time, all members of council have indicated, from what I've heard, that at some point, we would look to expand in those parts that need additional stations. This is just stage one.
Sure. This is my opinion, my opinion only. It's just, we've got the fire fee now, which is, you know, going to go into play, and now, which is, you know, going to go into play. And we've got two stations, 24/7. So there are going to be folks in this county paying for that fire service, like the sewer fee, that will not receive that fire service.
They will still have part-time people in the stations.
But that's what they got now.
Well, yes, sir, but they don't have someone at 3:00 in the morning who's guaranteed to get a vehicle out there, which they will now.
Listen, I'm all for, you know, fire service. I'm all for them doing great. And I'll tell you what, I'm very proud of our firemen. I was a fireman myself. And the kind words that Mr. Snodgrass said is very true. That's what firemen do. They do that on a regular basis. They'll run into a fire when everybody else is running out. They'll run into a disaster when everybody's running out. I know I used to be one. I always was running out. That was a joke. But anyway, it's a very dangerous job. And I really respect each and every one of them. And Chief, I'm glad to see you here tonight as well, too, with Lugoff. Thank you. But anyway, that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Other comments? Mr. Brazel, any comments?
Looking ahead, as we grow this, I think the funding, I think we've got an opportunity with seeing Lou money coming. We got Mr. Burgess to thank for lots of new projects in the county. So if members of council would think about maybe using some of that revenue to help fund it, I think that's a legal possibility. I'd love to see some of that revenue head towards those guys in that direction, so we can continue to fund rural fire. Thank you.
All right. I'll close it out with a couple of comments.
Could I say one more thing?
Yeah, Jimmy, go right ahead.
Then you can finish it out, sir. Thank Mr. Brazel for those comments, because I would really be interested in seeing that and just seeing how that would play out. And that could certainly possibly get my support on the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close it out. Let's recall how we got here after some very serious work by Mr. Conell, Mr. Gardner, and other members of that fire commission, I think this is Snodgrass, that finally said, "Look, we got to do something." And I know we had Chief Spitzer here last week, no, two weeks ago. This is volunteers and full-time. And it's something that's laid to rest and laid aside for too long. And at last, we have a solution on the way to a final solution. The final solution is, my second point, is this fee is something nobody really wants. We don't want it, but we have to find a source of recent revenue. And we are hoping to transfer to a more equitable approach if we get the support of our legislators, who to this point have, at the State House, have hamstrung us under Act 388, which doesn't allow us to have an equitable way for any of the counties to raise money for their fire services. This gets us on the path to a long-term solution. With that, we move to a vote. Mr. Brazel?
Opposed, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Opposed?
Opposed. And all others in favor signify by raising your hand. Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Conell. Any further opposing? That, Mr. Jones and Mr. Brazel oppose. The motion passes on third reading. Thank you very much. To all our fire services, we support you. With that, we move to item number six, which is a first reading of the issuance of a general obligation bond in one more series, in an amount not to exceed $7 million. It's on the screen. It's at tab G. And for you, Russell, it's page thirty-nine, in the second package of stuff that came to you from Ms. Mary. Vic, can you open the discussion, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as part of the budget that was passed, a millage that was already existing has been reallocated. This is the first part of that. It would allow for the issuance of a GO bond that would allow the county to do several things, one of which is to build a new public works facility. A second would be to build the new fire station in Cassett that we've been discussing. And third would be to build a new EMS station.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Let me just ask one bit further here. This is a part of the general restructuring of all of our finances.
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about that in general, and then we'll get to a discussion?
Yes, sir. As we'll see on the next item on the agenda, we will be, council approved the defeasance or the paying back of bonds that were currently issued by defeating those bonds that frees up millage that is currently on the books. And council has chosen to reallocate that millage in several ways. This being one of them, issuing some new bonds that allow us to build these stations and the facility that are needed.
And it takes us out of the debt situation we were as a county and moves us into a more liquidous position. Mr. Tucker, were you the first on that one?
Yes, sir, I was.
Please.
Just wanted to say thanks, Mr. Carpenter, for being creative and to making sure that we're efficient and effective in doing the things that mostly need it now for our citizens and for our employees. Thank you.
A second. Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I think this helps us fulfill that part of the fire service, to build a station in Cassett, get that 24/7 service. And it helps us to get another EMS station, which I think we badly need. And we certainly need something for the public works. That's in bad shape. So I think this does some of the things that we need to upgrade our facilities. I'm all in favor of it.
Yeah, Mr. Snodgrass, and then we'll do Ben Conell.
Good deal. Just excited about what this move helps us do with the fire station. And as a new fire station there in the Cassett area. In fact, I saw someone ask recently, "Hey, how about the Cassett Fire Station?" And so here we are. And excited about it. And excited about the, I guess, the sense of community that a fire station could bring. I mean, not just a physical, something to look at, but perhaps the future of developing through, even through private partnerships, whether it be park, green space, whatever, something that just kind of builds in that community. So excited about investing in this part of the county, as well as the public works building, which is, again, in that part of the county. As one who is in the middle of re-landscaping my yard, I've been to the county dump, or the landfill a lot of times with my yard debris, and they need something. They are in desperate, desperate need to be able to have a facility as they continue to grow, as our county begins, continues to grow, and to be able to respond to not just solid waste issues, but to obviously roads and things of that nature. So looking forward to seeing this move forward.
Thank you, sir. Ben?
Yes, Mr. Carpenter, I heard you state the location of the other investments. Could you state for the public again where the EMS station's going to go, the new one?
The EMS H we're looking to replace is up at 521 North of the City of Camden, where the current, there's currently an EMS station that's been closed for about a year. So it would replace that station, not necessarily at that exact same parcel, but somewhere in that part of the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Other comments?
That's where Lockhart Road comes out, right?
Yes, correct.
Yes, sir.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carpenter, maybe you can answer this question. The, I know there were some comments brought up by Councilman Brazel about the cost of the building at the, and everything Mr. Snodgrass said is true about, they need a new building at the landfill, no question about it. But it was four, wasn't it, $4 million?
That was the estimate, yes, sir. And we don't really know what the bid would be.
And is that's what's going to be spent if this reading passes? We're not sure it will.
Not a guarantee, no, sir. It's, we will design a building that is cost-efficient as we can. And as you may recall in the past, when bids have come in, the council's uncomfortable with, then we pull them off and we've redone them, trying to cut the costs. So I can't tell you it'll be a $4 million bid. That's just what our in-house people think it would cost to build the building we're looking to.
And explain more time where you took the millage and where you shifted it?
The millage was paying debt, existing debt. We paid off most of that debt, and then we're using it in several areas. One to EMS, one to issue this bond, and then one to go into the general fund.
How much?
A total of 7.2 mils across the board.
Across the board?
Yes, sir.
And no increase in millage?
That's correct. No increase.
Just taking the debt bond, passing it through?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a huge financial achievement on behalf of Sandra and Vic and the team. And I appreciate that the county has allowed Vic to do this restructuring and increase our buying power and value at little increase or no increase in millage. It's great. Russell, I'm sorry, I should have gone to you first. Mr. Brazel?
No, it's fine. We reviewed those numbers. And just to be clear, this doesn't increase any millage, any tax increase.
That's correct.
We freed up a bunch of, we freed up a bunch of cash, cash flow, and we're getting some projects done. While I hope that we can be a little more efficient with the public works facility, $4 million still sticks out as a larger amount of money, in my opinion. I will support, I will support this. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. I do want to ask some housekeeping. We go in July, we begin one meeting a month all the way through December. And of course, we always retain the capability of having a call meeting. Do you see a call meeting for either the second or third reading on this ordinance?
At this point, no, no, sir.
Okay, so we can move through and do course with the next meeting in July and August. All right. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, Ben.
I was just going to remind council of one example Mr. Carpenter made me think of, in which we got a bid that we didn't like. It was Davis Bacon Act funds, an exorbitant price per square foot for, I think it was the chemical building, we call it, or that office space over near sewer processing.
Yeah.
And then we put it back out, and we're able to find a much better deal. So whether it's refurbishment, replacement, or otherwise, you know, we're going to put it out for bid. We're going to get multiple bids, hopefully. And we'll make adjustments based on value.
I see a real emphasis at this table, and also from Hawaii, for value, for money, right, Jimmy? Over to you, Jimmy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I just want to thank Mr. Brazel once again, because I know he was involved in thinking outside the box with a lot of this, you know, using different monies here and there. And I appreciate that at least it's not going to be any increases at this point in time. Thank you.
So with that, I'm ready to go to a vote. Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
Yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand in approval. And Mary, it's unanimous on the first reading. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We move to item number seven, closely related, a first reading of an ordinance for an installment plan of finance. It's at tab H. It's on the screen. And for Russell, it's page fifty-two. Mr. Carpenter, can you open it, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is the other half of what we were just discussing. This is the ordinance that allows the county to defees their existing bonds or pay them off.
Bless you.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a first, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner, a discussion. This is the first cousin of what we just voted on. Mr. Tucker, any comments?
No, sir. Self-explanatory.
Any comments, anybody? Over to you, Russell. Any comments?
No comments, sir.
Very good. Seeing that is the situation, we move to a vote. All those in favor, first of all, Russell, would you signify?
Yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you, and congratulations, Vic. And we'll move on to the second reading. Item number eight is a first reading entitled of only authorizing the consumption of alcoholic beverages on real property. There's no attachment. There's nothing to see. Can you introduce this item, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, it is, now that the county has facilities that are conducive to people holding special events and public events there, it has been requested that we create and put in place a policy that would allow a special use permit for the service and the selling of alcoholic beverages. This entitled only, would this policy be developed by staff, and it would be returned to council on second reading.
I'm sure there'll be discussion on that. Can we have a first on that, please?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Let's begin discussion, because I'm sure the staff will want to have some guidance going in. Mr. Tucker?
First and foremost, I want to say I'm not an alcoholic. I know that the city has similar policy or law, whatever you want to say. And if we're going to compete into the world of, you know, having tourists and visitors come, you know, and being hospitable, we're going to have to do the things that people want. And unfortunately, sometimes when we consume these beverages, we're not the best behaved folks. I'm all about developing and making Kershaw County a good place to visit and live and work. So I'm going to support this. I know other people may have different beliefs, different religions, but I'm just stating where I'm at. And it's not so I can go out and get drunk at the park. But I do support folks who's putting on these events to have the capability if they so desire. Thank you.
Second?
Yeah, I think it's important that we have this. It doesn't change the fact that if you get stumbling drunk, that you will be arrested on county property as well. So, you know, so you have to keep that in mind as well. So I think people that, at most places have something like this, I think, that have events. And I think it's important that we have one. But also the fact that our fine sheriff will be enforcing laws to go along with it. So I don't think anything would get out of hand. So I will be supporting this.
Other comments? Russell, any points from Hawaii?
Hawaii? Saying you just found out where I was at. Hey, um...
Witness protection.
The way I'm reading this, it had to get some sort of a permit, right? It wouldn't allow people to be drinking on a daily basis on county property. Is that the way I'm understanding it?
Yeah, let's let Mr. Carpenter talk about some of the parameters. Go ahead, Vic.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. What we would anticipate, broad things of it would be, first of all, yes, it would be a one-time use permit only. There would be a fee they would have to pay. As part of the requirements of the permit, they would have to provide off-duty law enforcement based on the size of the gathering. So up to a certain number, they would have to have one officer, up to more than that, they'd have to have two officers, et cetera. They'd have to maintain order decorum, whether it's in a facility located in the city or the county. Law enforcement would still obviously be responsible for addressing any issues. They'd have to clean up after themselves. It's a fairly standard policy you'll find across any organization that has facilities. But what, as was alluded to earlier, is people start looking for places to hold events. That's one of the aspects you're looking for. So be they weddings, or be they certain parties or functions, fundraisers, what have you. This opens the door to allow us to do so, which becomes a revenue source for parks and recreation. And as we acquire properties such as the River Parcel, you know, that could be a very popular venue for large-scale events that could generate a good bit of revenue to help offset the cost of operating it. So that's what normally counties and cities will do, is it generates a good bit of revenue for them, but it's done in such a fashion that it's safe, it's seamly, it's well-ordered.
I'm sure there are examples of best practices, too, that you'll bring before us. Ben, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say, you know, I don't drink at all. So this is uncharted territory for me. But I do believe in personal agency and freedom to choose. And I think it'd be ironic, or maybe not quite hypocritical, but at least ironic, we didn't consider the language. This is in first reading entitled only, so I can't even look at the language that would apply. Because we accept taxes from businesses that sell or use alcohol, and we're happy to spend those funds in Kershaw County on particular projects. So I'd like to see what the language actually says. I'll support it in first reading.
Other comments? I tell you, I've gotten, oh, please, Jimmy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please, go ahead.
Just a legal question. How does this affect our liability, Mr. Bows?
Yeah, good point.
Well, we will require them to have liability insurance. Yes. So they will have liability insurance. We will require it. Have a certificate. They have to give a certificate. Yes.
Of course, you have more information on second reading about the fee and this and another.
Yeah. Excellent point. Thank you. Looking at best practices, looking at insurance. I can't tell you the number of times people have called me about access to our property in two different ways with alcohol. One, that it would be sold there. And secondly, that they might be able to bring their own containers. So this helps us answer both of those calls. Thank you for leaning forward. I'm hearing it all over the county. Ben, please.
Yeah, Jimmy's question prompted one other for me. Mr. DeBose, in addition to a certificate of insurance indicating that the actual participant has insurance themselves, we would be designated as a beneficiary directly on the policy, or we require something like that?
No, we're typically not. Typically not. We can be, but we're typically not. What we usually require is they maintain insurance. And we typically, of course, we have tort protection, we typically have $1 million. And so typically, we require them to have $1 million, although sometimes it's a lesser amount. But they get special event insurance. So that would cover their liability. And of course, we have our liability covered.
And then they would indemnify us for any and all occurrences during their event, I guess?
Well, they usually don't have, well, we can have an indemnification agreement. We usually require them to have insurance.
Okay.
And a sufficient amount. And that covers their liability. We wouldn't be liable, of course, for something they do.
Yeah, of course, if anybody with $180 bucks can go and file a lawsuit against everybody that's related to it.
But we have insurance, and they would too.
Okay.
Thank you. Excellent points. And I think you got enough, Vic, to get started. Looking forward to this coming back in for some detailed review. With that, I think we can move to a vote. Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
I think we can support this tonight. Looking forward to learning a little bit more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And all others signify by raising your hand. I'm waiting for Mr. Snodgrass? Okay.
Don't wait on me.
Thank you, Mr. Conell, Mr. Burns, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, and of course, Mr. Brazel in the affirmative. Those opposed. Mr. Snodgrass and Mr. Jones, the motion passes on the first reading. All right, very good. With that, we move to new business, item number one, with our librarian here. Good to see you, ma'am. Is a library board appointment. It's at tab I. It's up on the screen. Item page fifty-nine, for you, Russell, is a replacement of Mr. Bob Vaughn, who's been a loyal supporter. And the person who is the applicant, which has been before you before in your previous packets, is someone maybe known to you, Casey Brazel. Can we have a motion to approve?
Let's make that motion to nominate Casey Brazel to the library board.
Very good. Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Conell. Any discussion?
Looking at her bio, she's got an education background. And I think she'll, in fact, I talked to the chairman of the board earlier today, Johnny Cornady, and he was excited about having her on board. And I think she'll be a value add to our library board.
Mr. Brazel, I believe you're going to abstain, but maybe you can say some nice things to Ms. Brazel later on.
He needs to not say anything.
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, he needs to certainly recuse himself. Listen, I think she is fantastic. And Russell knows this. When he and I didn't get along, she and I always did. She's a wonderful lady. She's a hard worker. My son thought she was the best, the best teacher he ever had when he was in school. And I'm absolutely honored to support her tonight on this.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
And I'm very thankful we've got our librarian back than we had many years ago.
Ms. Amy.
I mean, we can't let her leave again. Thank you.
She's not going nowhere this time.
You do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, Russell, you don't have to respond. Just make sure you tell your wife that we appreciate her willingness to serve. You know, it says something when you get both spouses in the house that's willing to volunteer their time and give back to where they live. So tell her, like you say, a hearty thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Brazel will recuse himself, not abstain. He'll recuse himself.
Thank you.
That's what I see.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Other comments? With that, we move to a vote with Mr. Brazel having recused himself. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. And Russell, please tell that lady, thank you.
Yeah, did he say he recused himself?
Yeah.
Let me, for the record, I will state I recused myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, he did say that. Thank you.
He did just now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Everybody's so helpful today. We're moving now to item number two under new business. It's at tab I, page sixty-two. Let me move over there. And what I'm going to use tonight is what's on page sixty-three, is kind of a scorecard. It's nominations for the health... It's nominations for the Health Services District appointments. We've had some excellent people apply. I need to, at the outset, need to tell you, we have a letter from Katie Candy, who asked to withdraw because of business issues, so she will not compete, even though her name was in an original package. It is not in this package. And based on our discussion, I think, two or three meetings ago, I'm gonna record what, how we should proceed with this. We have seven seats that are designated by district and one for the chairman. We will nominate in numerical order, and then second, and then discuss, and then vote. And I will tell you who the people are in each of the seats as we go through. I'm gonna be... And y'all correct me if I got it wrong, because this is a little bit complicated. But for seat number one, that's Mr. Brazel's district, and he has two applications, Shannon West and Donnie Wilson. With that, the idea would be, we go to him, and he would nominate. It would be a second, a discussion, and a vote, and then we'd move on to seat number two. Okay? When we get through that, I'll then explain the process for those at-large, and they are two at-large positions, seat number eight and nine. So with that, we move to item District One for Mr. Brazel. Who do you nominate, Mr. Brazel?
Nominate Donnie Wilson.
Donnie Wilson. Can we have a second?
Second.
From Mr. Snodgrass, a discussion led by Mr. Brazel, if you wish.
Yes, thank you, sir. So obviously, there's so many good people that want to be a part of this board. I think we've got several others that we should look at, including Shannon for the one of the at-large seats. And there's several other ladies and gentlemen that have applied that I think we need to keep in mind for those at-large seats. So you wish you had more than one to appoint, but that's all we get, so we make the best decision we can at the time. But thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Any further discussion? Yeah.
Are we doing nominations or motions? Because I think that should have been a motion.
Yes, a motion. Please, go ahead. All right? And any further? Mr. Jones, anybody? Okay. With that, we move to a vote. Mr. Brazel, obviously, let me have your vote first.
Yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand?
Point of order.
Yes.
Can I get some clarification from the county attorney on this?
Go ahead. Yes.
All right. The process we're doing, the motion versus the nomination on the one through seven?
Well, that's seat number one and district number one.
Correct.
And my understanding is that Mr. Brazel nominated Donnie Wilson.
Changed it to a motion.
Well, he nominated by motion, because the council has to appoint it. But he nominated.
Okay.
Yes. It's a motion, but he nominated him by motion. Yes.
Let me restate. I make a motion to appoint Donnie Wilson to nominate.
He's gotta nominate?
Is that helpful? Okay.
He nominates by motion is what he's doing.
That's exactly right. Okay. So we move to vote. All those in favor, we already have the affirmative from Mr. Brazel. Signify by raising your hand.
Yes.
Yep, so Donnie Wilson is unanimous. Mary, we move to the next one. And let's make sure we're moving to a motion to nominate?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, you guys are gonna hold me to...
Because you can't nominate.
Protocol tonight, right? All right, we move... Mr. Tucker is district number two, and you have a motion, sir.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Nick Moore for district two.
Okay.
Seat two.
Seat two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Jimmy?
It was me.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Jones was the second. Mr. Tucker, any discussion?
Just wanted to say, Nick served a couple of years in an unexpired term on the hospital health district, and he's, from my research and understanding, has done a terrific job and brings a great value to the board. And I also want to recognize the chairman, Mr. Darryl Augman, who's out there in the audience too tonight.
Great. Hey, Darryl. Good to have you here tonight. Didn't see you sneaking in. And all right, with that, any other discussion? Mr. Brazel, any discussion?
No, sir, no discussion.
Okay. All right, with that, we move to a vote. Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
I vote yes, to support this.
And all others, please signify by raising your hand. And Mr. Moore is unanimously instated for a four-year term in district two for seat two.
Seat two.
With that, we move to district three for seat three for a two-year appointment. Mr. Conell, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I nominate and move to appoint Mr. Leo Scott for district three.
Very good. Mr. Scott, a second, please.
Second.
For Mr. Tucker, discussion, Ben?
Leo's just an outstanding guy. He's a hard worker, Lugolf Elgin High graduate, and has gone on to retire from a well-accomplished military career, and during that process, accomplished and achieved a couple of graduate degrees in finance and human resources that helped him along the way. I think he'll be a great addition to the board.
Very good. Other comments? Second, Mr. Tucker?
I really haven't spent any time with this gentleman, but I've talked to Councilman Conell, and he had nothing but great things to say, so I do support this, and it's an honor to second it.
Yeah. Mr. Brazel, any comments?
My 100% support. Looking forward to having this gentleman help.
Very good. All right, any other further comments? With that, we move to a vote. Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Others signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Scott, is appointed to a four-year term.
That's seat number three. We just need to make sure they reflect the seats.
Excuse me, that's a two-year term.
Two-year term, correct.
Yeah. Now we move to seat number four from district four. Mr. Jones, do you wish to make a motion?
I will make the motion to nominate Darryl Augburn, who is currently the chair of the district.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Conell?
Mr. Snodgrass. Snodgrass.
Thank you.
You can take my second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snodgrass. Jimmy, go ahead.
Well, I think Darryl speaks for himself. Everybody knows who he is, and he's done a great job. I can remember 10 years, 12 years ago, Darryl, we had a conference... Well, in my first 15 years ago is when we got started, but about three or four years after that, Darryl came to me and said, they're gonna serve on the hospital board. We had a lot going on then, and sure enough, he got all the votes, got on the hospital board, and of course, he is where he is now. Darryl, you've done a great job. I couldn't see this board without you at this point in time, because you've got groundbreaking, you know, happening, and then you've got building moving forward, and I think it's only right to let you see the fulfillment of this, and this time we'll certainly give you that. But thank you for all you've done, Darryl, and your support as well to this county.
Other comments? Mr. Brazel?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Darryl as well. I think what's been done, transitioning from the county owning the hospital into what we have today, it's a lot of work that goes into what you do, sir, and I thank you very much for all of your time and all of the success that you've driven, so looking forward to having you on this board to continue keeping us going in the right direction. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Snodgrass?
Sure. Just, Darryl, thank you so much for your work. I know your background, your experience has been invaluable, really, to be able to help us navigate all the things that go into negotiating all of the intricacies of that medical hospital world, so thank you.
Very good. Other comments? Oh, yeah, Mr. Gardner.
Just thank you for your time. Thank you for all the work you've done, but I think your work is just getting ready to begin, really.
That's true.
So get ready, but we appreciate you. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ben, go ahead.
Darryl, of course, would prefer us just move on, and he doesn't like public praise heaped upon him. But I think one thing that's important to state for the record, as we formed this new Health Services District Board, is that Darryl, and sometimes the board, got lucky. But luck is when preparation meets opportunity. And there's been folks along the way who had extremely charitable hearts in giving land or selling land at a huge discount, and some other things have just fallen into place because of how hard the board worked in the past and how prepared they were as well. So I appreciate that and all of your work, and I hope that the board going forward will also take that as an earmark on how they do their business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, excellent. All right, I'll just close it out. Darryl, ditto and all of that. It's been a joy to work with you and to see what you do. I just can't help but think that the future will be very bright for our county. We should also recognize that Darryl is the one that saved our hospital for us. Thank you, sir.
Amen.
And I can't imagine Kershaw County without a hospital. Thank you, Darryl. And now we're gonna have a new opportunity with Carish Wing and all the things he does for Vision 2030. Going to Darryl, and I said, please, sir, can you help us achieve some things? And lo and behold, he helps CMC, he helps schools with counselors, I mean, the list just goes on and on. With that, I think we can move to a vote. Mr. Brazel, how do you vote, sir?
I vote heck yeah.
Heck yes. Mary, I don't... You have to scratch that first letter. And all others signify by raising your hand, and Darryl is reappointed, and the term is four years. We go to seat number five, led by district, Mr. Snodgrass, for a term of six years. You wish to make a motion, sir?
I do. I move to nominate and appoint Eric Gunter to the Health Services District Board, please.
Mr. Gunter, can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, thank you. Nominated Mr. Gunner a year and a half ago, so I felt that he was a worthy candidate then. Individually works for the Mars Corporation and brings a unique skill set and perspective to the board, and so he just was really getting started, and I know is kind of part of the new blood or the new vision that's helping us move this board forward. So happy to appoint him again and give him some more time.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Gunter for being willing to continue to serve and continue to be a good team player on the Hospital Health District Board.
Thanks, sir. Other comments? Mr. Brazel, any comments?
No, sir. Just appreciate his time as well and look forward to having him.
Thank you, sir. With that, I would say also, ditto, just a great young man and a great family, too, by the way. With that, we move to a vote. Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand? Mr. Gardner, thank you very much. It's unanimous, Mary. We're starting to lose interest here. All right, thank you very much. And he is appointed for six years. They moved to seat number six, a term of six years, appointed by Mr. Gardner in district six. Mr. Gardner, do you wish to make a motion?
I do. I would move to nominate and appoint Eric Boland to the board.
Very good. Can we have a second?
Second.
For Mr. Jones? Mr. Gardner, you want to open the discussion?
Mr. Boland is obviously the headmaster of County Military County. He's served on this board, and I think it's... He's been a vital part of all the things they've been doing, and I think it would serve us well to put him back on there to see some of the things going on, move forward.
Very good. Other comments? Mr. Jones?
If I may. Once again, Eric Boland, he was there when we needed him. He stepped up. I think I just about had to talk him into taking it the first time, Darryl, with your help. But he's been a good supporter of the district. He's been a good supporter with... Working well with Darryl, and I appreciate Eric very much, and I'm thrilled that Tom made the motion to nominate him, and I certainly do support it. Thank you.
Very good. Other comments? Mr. Brazel, any comments from you?
I appreciate everything that you've done and everything you're gonna do, sir. Thank you.
Very good. With that, and I also echo all those comments. With that, let's move to a vote. Mr. Brazel?
I vote yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand? And Mr. Boland is appointed to a six-year term, and that now comes to my term. Seat number seven is designated for the chairman to nominate and to make a motion, a six-year term. And as chairman, I go not at large, but from countywide, and I would like to nominate Mr. Walter Long. Can I have a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Second.
Mr. Snodgrass, very good. So with that, I will let Mrs. Snodgrass lead the discussion, please.
Sure. Again, Mr. Long is one of these members who just got on the board in recent years and has quickly has proved himself to be an integral part of moving projects forward, and so looking forward to him being a part of that moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Brazel, you want to make a comment?
Look forward to having Mr. Long back on the board. He's definitely put a lot of time and effort into it, and I think he'll keep it rolling, keep it headed in the right direction, so my 110% support.
Very good. Other comments?
Good man has my support.
Very good. Others? I would just say that he is an eminent banker, a distinguished family in Kershaw County, and Mr. Long is the most popular man for boards in this county that you've ever seen because of his competence, and I know that's echoed by Darryl Augburn as well, and I'm very happy to lead that nomination and motion. So with that, we move to a vote. Russell, how do you vote?
I vote yes, sir.
And all others signify by raising your hand? And it's unanimous, Mary, and we have now got seven seats filled. It now falls to me to summarize and move to the next phase of this. Let's just review who we have placed on the board. Donnie Wilson, seat one. Seat two is Nick Moore. Seat three is Leo Scott. Seat four is Darryl Augburn. Seat five, Eric Gunter. Seat six, Eric Boland. And seat seven, Walter Long. And seat seven, Walter Long. So that now leads those that were not placed, and we move into the at-large piece. Let me just summarize who I think we have. We have Mr. Shannon West. We have Karen Jenkins. We have Teresa, Tanisa J. We have Mr. Kumas. And we have Mr. Tidwell. I think I've got them all right, Mary. Those are the ones that have applied but have yet to be sat.
Keisha Hayes.
Ms. Hayes.
And Keisha Hayes. I went right by her. She's right here. And Keisha Hayes. So that is a total of one, two, three, four, five, six names. And under the rules that I thought we agreed, we will build a slate of at-large nominations by motion of the remaining seats for seat eight and seat nine, and nominate and second without a vote as many as people would have to wish councilmen may nominate more than one at-large. Okay? And we'll then discuss the slate, and then we'll vote on seat eight and seat nine. So there are questions and comments on that? Let me defer it to Mr. Brazel first, Jimmy.
Well, I just want to, you know, I just wanted to clarify, each council member gets to make their nomination.
Absolutely. And you can make more than one if you wish. Mr. Brazel, you got any comments on the procedures?
So I'm going to go first, I think. And I can nominate two folks. Is that right?
You're first now?
You would be first because of, we'll defer to you calling in from long distance. We'd ask you to nominate one, and then we'll go through the entire county slate here, and then we'll come back to you if you want to nominate a second one. Okay?
Okay. I'm ready to start if you are.
Let me just make sure everybody here agrees on that procedure.
That's for seat eight.
I thought we would do both, but we can do eight and then come back to nine. How would you like to do that?
He's getting the slate first, and then we can.
I was going to do the slate first, and then we'll come to seat eight.
I'm with you. That sounds fine.
Yeah, slate in terms of, it may be that not everyone is nominated. Okay? All right?
Okay. I just think that everybody needs a chance to make a nomination.
Absolutely. I think we absolutely all agree.
If I could clarify, we've got a pool of applicants, and now we're working on getting a pool of nominees.
That's right.
The slate. And then we're going to have whoever we actually vote on to get into the seat.
We're about to have a nominating ballot, basically.
Yeah, I just wanted you all to understand that.
Thank you.
Any further questions from you before I recite a couple of things? Russell?
No, sir. I think I'm clear.
Okay. Just to review again, Mary, make sure I got the names right. Katie Concannetti has withdrawn. We have Shannon West, Karen Jenkins, Tanisa J., Mr. Kumas, Mr. Tidwell, and Keisha Hayes. All right? So over to you to make a motion to nominate for the slate. Russell?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tanisha J. for seat number eight. She goes by TJ and has been a lifelong resident of Kershaw County.
We'll talk about her later. We just want to get her name on the slate first.
Okay, yes.
Okay?
I'll second that.
And a second from Mr., let me just copy down all these. And a second by Mr. Conell. You got that, Mary? All right. And then we go, just other nominations and motions, please.
Ms. Chairman?
Yep.
I would like to nominate Mr. Frederick Shannon West.
Shannon West.
Second that.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Conell and a first from Sammy Tucker. This is all come back later. Mr. Conell, do you want to nominate anybody?
They've got them covered. Thank you, sir.
Do we have other nominations?
Yes.
Yeah, Jimmy?
I have always felt that the original board member should have been reappointed to stay on, to go through. However, that's not happening, but I am going to nominate Wayne Tidwell.
Mr. Tidwell, Wayne Tidwell.
And also a second nomination to Mr. John Kumas.
We'll come back to that as we go through, as I said. So Mr. Tidwell by Mr. Jones, do we have a second? Mr. Brazel, do you wish to second?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think I'm good, as Mr. Conell says.
Okay. There's no second, Mr. Jones, so the motion fails.
Thank you.
All right. Other motions, and we'll come back to Mr. Jones because he's indicated a second. Mr. Snodgrass?
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Karen Jenkins.
Mr. Snodgrass for Karen Jenkins. Do we have a second?
A second.
Was that you, Sammy?
Yes, sir. It was.
Do we have any other motions? Jimmy, you said you had a second coming up. Do you have another?
I do. Mr. John Kumas, who currently sits on the board.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Brazel, Mr. Kumas was nominated. Do you wish a second?
No, sir. I think I'm good with where I'm at. Thank you, though. Good man. Good man.
Absolutely.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Nominate them all.
Yeah. And that's a second.
If I may.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, members of council. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, Jimmy. Mr. Brazel, you said you might have a nomination.
My second nomination was going to be Shannon West, but Mr. Tucker has nominated him. So thank you, Mr. Tucker.
All right. Very good. All right. And so now what I, I'll review what I think we have. The first nomination by Mr. Brazel and seconded by Mr. Conell was Tanisa J. The second nomination was, a motion, was Shannon West by Mr. Tucker and Mr. Conell. And the third on the slate is Karen Jenkins by Mr. Snodgrass, seconded by Mr. Tucker. And let me move to close the nominations, but first to see if there are any others. Okay? Very good. So with that, we move now to seat eight. With that, I will take it in the order. Mr. Brazel, do you wish to nominate Tanisa J. for seat eight?
Yes, sir, I do.
That's a motion. Do we have a second? And that would be Ben, I believe.
I'll second that.
Very good. And that's seat eight for two years, and it's at-large, and it's renewable. Okay? So with that, any discussion from Mr. Brazel?
Yes. Tanisa J., TJ, is, like I said, a lifelong resident of Kershaw County. Her grandfather, Mr. Wooton of Elgin, he is known for a good catfish, too. He was a wonderful gentleman, and their family's just been in Kershaw County forever and ever. And I know she would be a dedicated member, and she would work hard on this hospital board, and I would appreciate any support. And I think she resides in Mr. Jones' district in Lugol. So I would appreciate any consideration for her.
Yeah. Mr. Conell?
Well, I'd second what Russell would say, but I've had occasion to know Ms. J. over the years through just being with her at wrestling tournaments. And you can really get to know people. She's a wrestling mom, dagum tough.
Oh, boy.
But extremely sharp as well. And I think part of the purpose of this process is to maintain some of the old blood, as it were, that has a lot of the experience on the board, but also get an injection of some new blood and achieve a more equitable representation based on population in the county. And I think that Tanisha would be, Ms. J. would be a good fit.
Very good. Other comments? Yeah, Jimmy?
Great family. I'm glad she's willing to get, put her application and move forward with us. I hope the votes are there. I certainly do support her. And Russell, thank you for recruiting her. Appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, sir.
So with that, I think we can close the discussion on seat eight. With Mr. Brazel, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand? And it's unanimous, and seat eight is filled by Tanisha J., two years at-large. We move now to seat number nine. Shannon West was led by Sammy Tucker. Do you want to make the motion now for seat nine?
Yes, sir. Make the motion to appoint Mr. Frederick Shannon West.
Very good. A second was Mr. Conell.
I second that.
Yep. Mr. Tucker, you want to lead the discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. West is, I think, at the current time, and Chairman Ogbon can correct me, that has assistant living home experience that's set on the board. And not that the other members aren't valuable, but he brings a unique qualification and experience. And so I'm asking my colleagues up here to support him because, to me, I'm speaking just for me, he's done a good job being on the board already, and not to put his experience back on as they're going through these transitions is uncivilized.
Mr. Conell? Mr. Chairman, yeah. Just looking at, first, this is a really tough decision based on all the qualified candidates. But looking at Mr. West's 17 years of experience as we're going into a huge, the biggest in Kershaw County, long-term care project, he's got 17 years of understanding long-term care lingo, practices, and it just seems like the right fit to reappoint him to that large position.
Mr. Brazel, any discussion on your side?
I think this gentleman would be an excellent fit to stay on. Shannon has been in the industry, and he understands what's going on, and fully support him.
Very good. Other comments before we vote?
He's in Russell, Russ, he's in your district councilman, too. Thank you.
Yes, he is. Yes, sir.
And I'll tell you, he's a great guy. He has worked very hard.
He's a great guy.
Yeah.
Yes. Agreed. 100%.
Well, that's the team. I think we're ready to vote. But let me just say one thing real quick is, this is hard work. These are volunteers. They worked for a great leader in the past, and if he remains as chairman, I'm sure he will do the same level of leadership. But it's hard work. They meet all the time, and they have contracts. They've got a hospital. They've got all sorts of things. And the people of Kershaw County should recognize these nine names and the names who are coming off the board and the names that were not voted on but volunteered to do this. This is a true public service well beyond anything we could hope, and it's a legacy given to us over 50 years ago when this board was first set up, providing incredible healthcare oversight and support to our county. And it's an integral part of Vision 2030, I will tell you. Without a hospital and without that board, we would have a huge issue in our county. And it would not attract industry if we could not care for our people and be compassionate about it. So with that, I move to a vote. The vote is for Mr. Shannon West at-large for four years for seat number nine. All those in favor? Mr. Brazel, would you please first vote?
I vote yes.
And all others signify? And it's unanimous, and we close those proceedings, and you now have a new board, Mr. Ogbon. Thank you very much for your leadership and your humor.
Congratulations.
Yeah, Mr. DeBose, we're ready to move on, but what have you got?
The record just needs to indicate that the fact of July 1. These appointments are fact of July 1.
That's right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr.
I thank you, everyone. Item number three under new business, Lugol Fire District, it's at page 78 in your electronic book, Russell. And it's a tab kilo, and now military language, K, and it's up on the board. We've already been briefed on that. And with that, we'll make a motion to approve the budget, and then, chief, we'd certainly like to hear from you.
I'll so move.
Okay. Mr. Jones, a second?
Second.
For Mr. Conell. Discussion, we'd like to hear from the chief first, or anybody else wanted to have a discussion?
Since I made the motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, appreciate all you do. You do a great job. You've come to us four years. How many years you been the chief? Four. Has never asked for any additional funds from the taxpayers. He's really squeezed blood out of a turnip. And I understand that. Appreciate what you've done and keep it the good work.
Other comments? Shall we hear from the chief? Chief, do you want to add to what you briefed us on the last time around? It's, I see here before me 1,488,827 without any raise in taxes or fees, sir. Anything I had to add to the lengthy briefing we got last time?
Well, the lengthy briefing was brought upon the county council.
So true. So true.
And I answered. And for that, Russell, too, by the way. I appreciate it. No, I don't really have anything else to add. You know, again, we've worked our hardest. We continue to work our hardest. We have a great team. To be able to work on a budget, be able to present a balanced budget. And again, our last county council meeting, I did make mention that I will be back up here in the near future. I've got firemen I need to look out for and, you know, putting a plan together to be able to make sure we can continue to do that and be competitive and take care of the fine folks that work for us.
Thank you.
But as we said now, it's a balanced budget, and we'll do the best we can with it.
Yeah, it was a great presentation last time. Sammy, do you mind if I go to Mr. Brazel first?
Oh, no, most definitely.
Yeah, Russell, go ahead. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I reviewed the budget. Everything looks pretty cut and dry and solid. So thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. We appreciate everything you do.
Sammy?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Chief, I know I wasn't here for your lengthy presentation last time, and I'm glad I wasn't. But please tell your commissioners, your fire commissioners, thank you as well. We thank you, guys, and we definitely thank you employees. But I know how hard, because I know some of your commissioners personally, it is sometimes to make those meetings and put things aside so they can approve it, so you can get it to us. So please give a thank you to them as well.
I will.
And would you, people on the, watching on Facebook, need to know who you brought with you, that fine young man back there.
Yeah, absolutely. I brought Assistant Chief Cato with me, and he's my right-hand man.
There you go.
Good to have you.
He's a great guy and a great leader, so.
And we've got the Kershaw team standing right behind you. And I've been gratified as chairman to watch the teamwork between you and that team, and we can only get better. Thank you, chief. Other comments? All right. I move that we now move to a vote. All those in favor, first of all, starting with Russell?
Yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand? And it's unanimous. Chief, thank you. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
Really.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that concludes our formal agenda. Recall that we have moved to do an executive session at the end without a briefing, without a vote coming back. We move now to council briefings. Let's, let me depart from the protocol and let Russell start out, and I'll go to you, Ben. Russell, go ahead.
Council briefings? Sorry.
Yeah, council briefings, Russell.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
It's a bit difficult to follow sometimes when you're not there. Hey, no, so in my briefings, I want to recognize all of the folks who have reached out and put an application for the hospital board. I mean, the most important board in the county. Thank you all for applying. And to those that were appointed, congratulations. And but not to take away from anyone who was not appointed because we sincerely appreciate everyone's willingness to help. It means a lot. It means a lot to the community. It means a lot to Kershaw County. So I also want to thank all of the industry and Mr. Burgess's team in economic development. We've seen a lot of success in a short time, and I'm more than impressed. And just look forward to the future and continuing our positive growth in the community. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Conell?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I wanted to say that the Fourth of July will pass before our next meeting, and I hope that we'll all reflect on the independence and freedom that we have. The country has grown. Sometimes the laws have grown too numerous, but at the basis of all of it is individual freedom and the ability to try to provide for yourself and your family, which I am so grateful for. There's a lot of countries in different parts of the world where you can't worship the way you want to. You can't work in the job you want to. You can't live the way you want to in many ways, either because they don't have the infrastructure to accommodate what you want to do, or they don't have the laws on the books and the will to enforce them that they give you that freedom. So I'm thankful that we recognize our God-given freedom in the United States of America. I also wanted to thank the fire service. The decisions we made regarding fire service in the county have been data-driven. They've been informed by Lugol Fire and some of their best practices. They've been informed by Camden Fire and some of their best practices. And overall, we've reformed what fire service looks like in Kershaw County because of the data. These haven't been emotional decisions necessarily. We've responded to increased call volumes and tried to provide the equipment and locations that are needed based on, I still remember that hot map or heat map, I think you called it, Vic, whenever y'all were talking about where we're getting the most calls, and we've reacted to that data. So I'm really thankful that council overall has moved in that direction. And that's all I had to share, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Jones, please.
Yes, just something very briefly. The last couple of meetings, I think I have mentioned and talked about strong women within our community, and I'm going to go there again right quickly, very, very quickly though. I think I mentioned, uh, Ms. Katie Quinn last time, but I, uh, I feel like a, a female has to work five times harder to achieve in this life than a male. And I'd like to see if anybody disagrees with me up here, probably not. But, uh, I want to call out, uh, Kate Steins, who has really worked so hard in our community. She has denied to shine, uh, what they did with the children over in Lugol, the folks in Lugol. It's just been a wonderful, uh, thing. And, but, you know, when people like that give up on their time to make things happen in our community, and especially when it's a female, I think they deserve recognition because as I said, women have to work five times harder. But, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Stargras?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Just, I'll be brief here, but I'll follow up and echo, uh, some of what Ben said, that our, our step tonight with the fire service, nothing that was emotional, uh, but it was all data-driven and looking forward to, to getting that hub and spoke system in place like we talked about earlier. We talked about this, you know, is every bit of the county going to be able to benefit from this, and, and, uh, and it is. Uh, as Cassett will serve, right now it's Shepherd, but Cassett will serve as the hub that spokes out to Charlotte Thompson and to Antioch and, and Buffalo and all those areas. And so looking forward to, uh, having a 24-hour response team to be able to get trucks started, to get things on the road, as well as while the volunteers are going and the park timers are going to, uh, to meet them there for the fire. So, uh, I think that's great. And also, just an observation tonight, and this is very, this is very common, but I was looking at this agenda tonight, and, uh, you know, we have a lot to be proud of. And you look at this agenda, and I think it touched, we, we took action tonight that touched every part of this county. You know, so when you look at, when you look at Kershaw County, uh, very rarely do we just concentrate on just one area that gets more than the other. I, I think we, we do a, a, a great job of making sure that whether you live in Buffalo, Mount Pesca, or you live in Elgin, or in Pine Ridge, or out in East Camden, uh, I, I, I'm proud that we've got a council that's, that's looking out to make sure that the, the, the diversity of our county, everyone, uh, is, is able to, is able to benefit, uh, from, from the services that we're providing. And so I just, I, I noticed that tonight on our agenda. I think every part of the county was able to, was, was touched tonight by what we did tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly, um, I want to thank you guys for our last meeting, for, um, being responsible and, uh, moving forward with the budget and, and getting that in. Um, Mr. Carpenter, I want to say to you and your department heads, um, thank you as well. We'll be looking for, uh, the projects as they develop and come to fruition, um, updates and, uh, and, you know, progress reports. So, um, we've got a lot that's in this budget, uh, that we're, um, going to be looking forward to for '21, '22. Um, Chairman Ogden? Um, you got your A-team, man. Time to go to work. And, um, we wish you the best and we look forward to your, um, updates as well. And Mr. Burgess, you can't come see us enough with good news, so, uh, feel welcome. That concludes my report.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Gardner?
Just briefly to congratulate Vic and all the staff and all of our employees as we close another fiscal year. And, uh, I think it's been, uh, in spite of COVID and all the other things, I think we have persevered and we've done a good job. I think most of that credit goes to Mr. Carpenter. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And I'll close it out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If, with your permission, may I say one quick thing?
Sure.
I would just, and it didn't slip my mind, it's just I was thinking about something else. But, uh, Austin Brownham, who's a dear friend of mine, I just want to give a shout out to him because he may be listening or watching tonight. He's a remarkable young man, and I'd like to see him go against Ben Connell at some point in time in the wrestling mat. Thank you.
All right, and I'll close it out with the briefs. First of all, gentlemen in your boxes, there is a letter to our delegation. If you haven't been by your box tonight, you should see it. It, uh, it responds, and I have a duty to inform you that I've gotten letters from our delegation. And I'd like for you to go look at that letter and make sure you understand, uh, that there is a memo in there for record of extraordinary importance to you, and, and I'd like for you to look at it, please. If you have any questions, call myself or Mr. Carpenter, but it has a particular moment to you. Secondly, Vision 2030. Uh, this council agreed as a part of this budget to rewrite, reimagine, right, David?
Reimagine.
Uh, and rejuvenate that Vision 2030. Uh, it's remarkable the amount of achievements that we've made in there and over the last five years. Uh, but it needs to face the reality of a changed world with COVID and many, many other changes. And healthcare, you name it, it's out there. So we've had already two meetings. There'll be another meeting on the 13th of July. There'll be in each of the quadrants of the county. It'll address virtually everything that we talked about tonight and the budget. And then it'll, once it's, uh, completed, it'll be brought before this body to vote again, and that will lead us again to the next budget cycle that begins in January. We've got the core group hard at it, and, uh, I attended the meeting last night, and I'll try to make the next meeting if I can. But let me just give you a flavor of what they're talking about, things that you've seen before. Healthcare, thank you, Mr. Ogden. Roads. Clean community, thank you, Tom, for being here tonight. People want a sense of pride in their county, and they have a sense of pride, and it hurts people to see trash and litter. Uh, and, and so on and so forth. These meetings are worth your attending if you can find the time. And also, the budget was driven by this document, and likewise, economic development. The first chapter in here is the first priority, which is jobs. And thanks to Jeff and Vic Carpenter, and also, I must say, Peggy McLean and the hard work that went before. We are where we are with some good announcements today, and in about two weeks, three weeks, we'll have more. But I'll close by saying we're not competing with Lee County or Richland County. We're completed on a, competing on a global basis. You've heard me 100 times. We need a workforce. We need to have a product to offer to these people. And we need to have a county like this and a county council like this, ready with Vic Carpenter and Jeff Burgess leading, to show these people we're ready to receive them. Just consider Japan with Denkai. Japan, and they're the only copper foil manufacturer in the United States of America. And that's where transistors come from, and that's where electric vehicles come from. The only one in the United States is three miles from where you're sitting. Uh, India with Sterlite. China with GE and their appliances. Germany with Hinx, and Canada can for, for our wonderful lumber industry. So, gentlemen, this is just the start. Let's keep moving. Over to you, Vic.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, there's a few things tonight, um, to further illustrate how the county parks and rec at Justin has grown through COVID and others. A reminder that this coming Friday is the latest installment of our summer movies in the park. Uh, it'll be, uh, Zootopia, uh, in the KC West complex. Of course, it is free to the public. Gates open at seven, movie starts at 8:30. There will be food trucks there. This is the second one that we've done. We previously did Sonic the Hedgehog at the River Park. We'll continue these through the summer. Also, if you've had a chance to go by the, uh, um, swim center and the splash pad, um, it's crowded with kids having a great time. Uh, that's an example of what, uh, what they look forward to. Uh, we also had, uh, just a few weeks ago, our hospital had a large-scale gathering for its employees at the River Park to thank them, a movie night for them as well, which shows how our parks facilities are able to be used to benefit hundreds of people at a time in this community. Uh, so we continue to grow and show what we're capable of doing. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Uh, Attorney?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing, except, of course, executive session will involve a contractual legal location of economic development.
And you're, I'd like to have a motion to, uh, to retire and to the back room here, be close enough?
Yeah.
Uh, with this body, and we'll update Mr. Brazel later on. Can someone make a motion to move into executive session and return without a vote?
Make a motion?
Mr. Stargras, a second?
Second.
From Mr. Tucker. Uh, any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
We can't connect Mr. Brazel in the executive session?
I don't know. I mean, can you, can you guys try that?
Cell phone, I mean.
Hey, uh, Russell, you just give me a call in about five minutes.
Okay.
Call me as well, Russell.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, with that, we, um, thank you. And you've got my number. Now, with that, we move to vote. Russell? Russell, you give me a yes, and all those others signify. And it's unanimous, and we are in the executive session. Good night, Mr. Ogden.
1911.